Стой!
Чем мы сделали?
Хор.
Ну-ка, сиди.
Кто не занял? Третий. Кто-то занял, да? Третий.
А, кто-то значит занял?
Кто-то занял третий канал. Английский тут может задеть.
Так, английский же у вас тут. Русский если занял.
Да-да.
Так вот эта проблема. Так, 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 так.
Потом вот этот. Я когда проверил, тоже вот короче.
Мы говорим? Говорим, говорим. Идут резко заговорить на испанском, надо реально послушать. Хоп, хоп, говорим, продолжаем. А бара фур. С три фур он всегда на русском говорит.
So good morning.
Говорим, говорим.
Everybody. Welcome to Astana to this special session of Ser Garden Relief Society. Organized by, of course, the government of Kazakhstan and United National Azov Civilization. And I have to praise the role of His Excellency Mr. Maulen Asimbayev. Because when we met in Kashkais in Portugal last year. Under, you know, the global forum of United National Association preparing this important summit, eighth summit. Of, you know, religious traditional religious leader. I propose to my dear friend, His Excellency Mr. Asimbayev, why we didn't have a special session. In a specific issue that are so much important for religions and for religious society. So they agree and thanks to the work of Kazakhstan. We have been able to organize this very important and specific session. So I, my first word is for expressing my thanks to all of you. All of you that have agreed to take the floor and participate in this issue. We are going to exchange views and at the end we try to together make some principle. We are not going to get any Biden document today. But at the end I will distribute some draft principle that you come back and you will think about. In order that in the future we could all agree how to work together to protect this resource side. So my dear friends, excellencies, eminences, distinguished guests. Around the world we are still witnessing a disturbing rise in terrorist attack on religious site. Resulting the death of innocent worshipper and the distortion of complete destruction of targeted site. Such attack often perpetrated by terrorist group or allied militias. In few instances lone actors seek to strike at the very core of community's sense of identity. And belonging and achieve a far deeper impact on the affected communities. Such vile acts instill fear and fuel anger and hatred and may lead to a visual cycle of violence. The protection of religious site places of worship and ensuring the safety of worshipper is a fundamental human right. Article 18 of the Universal Declaration of Human Right affirmed the right of freedom of thought, conscience and religion. Noting that this right includes the right of individuals to manifest their religion and belief in teaching, practice, worship and service. Under UN Charter, member state bear the primary responsibility to ensure security and their territory and to protect their civilian. In its resolution A does rest does fifty five does two hundred fifty four. The United Nations General Assembly, I quote, call upon all state to exert their ultimate effort. To ensure that religious site are fully respected in conformity with international standard. And according with international, their national legislation and to adopt adequate measures aim at preventing such act of threat of violence. And invite relevant intergovernmental and non-intergovernmental organization. To contribute to those effort by developing appropriate initiative in this field. Protection of religious society is addressed by member state through a variety of normative framework and policy instrument. Including national security strategy and national legislation. As most of you are aware, my office developed a United Nation Plan of Action for safeguarding religious site. In the aftermath of the terrorist attack on two mosque in Christchurch, New Zealand in 2019. Person to the mandate received from Secretary General. The United Nation Plan of Action to safeguard religious site and unity and solidarity for safe and peaceful worship. Was launched on 12 September 2019. Was launched on 12 September 2019. The plan of action is anchored in relevant General Assembly, Security Council and Human Rights Council Resolution. As well as key document agree upon by religious leader. It provides a framework for action addressed to all relevant stakeholders to better prevent. Prepare for and respond to possible attack against religious site. Moreover, the plan encouraged collaboration among stakeholders to build trust, information sharing, partnership and joint action. A presentation of the implementation the plan will follow in the next segment of the program. Increasingly, the protection of religious site has gained momentum within the international community. On 22 June 2023, United Nations General Assembly adopted resolution seventy-seven dash two hundred ninety-eight. On the eighth review of the United Nations Global Counter Terrorism Strategy. Calling upon member state to strengthen effort to improve the security and protection. Of particularly vulnerable target including religious site procession and convoys as well as to enhance. The resilience to terrorist attack in particular in the area of civil protection. End of the quote. Considering that religious sites are places where individuals or group gathered to pray. Participate in ceremonies or perform act of devotion meditation. They are normally found within this negative structure. Although some communities consider certain natural species to be sacred and elevating them to the status of religious site. Religious site both as physical premises and location gathering individual from one religion denomination. Presents significant symbolic value particularly to terrorist group who exploit religious division. As the United Nations Plan of Action to Safeguard Religious Site note, I quote. Religious site are representative of the history, social fabric and tradition of people in every country. And community all over the planet and must be fully respected as place of peace and harmony. Where worship feel safe to practice the ritual. They can be hosted in action on modern building located in densely populated urban areas or remote part of the country. Allochin areas reserved for worship and prayer. The same site may include nursery, educational structure, shelter for the homeless. And facility for value social and community of rich program. The same religious site may be sacred to more than one faith community. In line with the General Assembly Resolution A res dash seventy-five dash two hundred fifty-eight. Adopt in 2021 or promoting a culture of peace and tolerance to safeguard religious site. If with the General Assembly strongly deplore attack against religious site and condemn all act of threat of violence. Destruction, damage or endangerment directed against religious site. Invite relevant stakeholders to support as appropriate the United Nations Plan of Action to Savoir Religious Site. A global conference involve all relevant stakeholder to spur hard political support for specific action. To take place of action forward was convened in United Nations Alliance of Civilization. Trail global forum in Kashkais, Portugal and many of today participants were present there. Today, my dear friend, we gather again to listen to your recommendation and good practices in safeguarding religious site. I will stop here and pass the floor to His Excellency, the Honorable Mr. Maulen Asimbayev. Chairman of the Senate of the Parliament of Republic of Kazakhstan. Thank you very much.
Mr. High Representative, Excellencies, distinguished participants and guests. First of all, on behalf of the Secretariat of the Congress of Leaders of World and Traditional Religions. I am pleased to welcome you to our capital Astana and to the hospitable land of Kazakhstan. We are truly honored to host this special session of the United Nations Alliance of Civilizations. On the eve of the eighth Congress of Leaders of World and Traditional Religions. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the UN Alliance of Civilizations. And to High Representative Miguel Angel Martinez personally. Your strategic leadership, your excellency and tireless efforts in advancing the global agenda of peace. And understanding and the preservation of religious sites and spiritual symbols are deeply appreciated. My thanks to you, Mr. Martinez, and to your team for organizing this session as part of our Congress. Distinguished participants. It's a great honor for us to host this important international forum here in the heart of Eurasia on Kazakh soil. For centuries, our land has served as a bridge between East and West. A crossroads where diverse cultures and beliefs have met. Throughout our history, temples and spiritual sites of various religions have coexisted peacefully. And they remain an essential part of Kazakhstan's cultural heritage. Muslims in particular revier the mausoleums of Arstambap and Khodja Ahmed Yasawi. And visit the underground mosque of Bikitata among other sacred sites. In Almata stands the Ascension Cathedral, one of the tallest wooden churches in the world. And the unique monument of history and architecture. In the North Kazakhstan region near the unique Maryamkol Lake. A Catholic spiritual center stands as a memorial to the Polish community. Deported to Kazakhstan during the repressions in the nineteen thirties. Who were saved from starvation in this very place. A statue of the mother of God with fish blessed by Pope John Paul II stands there as a symbol of gratitude. Every year, thousands of Jews from around the world visit the grave of Rabbi Levi Itschak Schneerson in Almata. Which is included in Kazakhstan's list of national heritage sites. And twenty years ago, Central Asia's largest synagogue, Beit Rachel Shabdat Lubavitch, was opened in Astana. Near Almata, At Tungalatas, unique Buddhist petroglyphs are images of Buddha with Sanskrit inscriptions. Dating back to the twelfth to eighteenth centuries have been preserved. Today, Kazakhstan is home to over one hundred ethnic groups and eighteen religious confessions. We have nearly four thousand places of worship. Including mosques, Orthodox, Catholic and Protestant churches, synagogues, Bahai houses of worship. Temples for followers of Krishna tradition and Buddhist temples. All of these sacred sites are part of our people's history and represent an invaluable spiritual and cultural heritage. We attach greater importance to their preservation and protection regardless of religious affiliation. The coexistence of these temples reflects the very essence of Kazakh national culture and identity. Respect, tolerance, openness and readiness for dialogue. As Pope Francis said during his visit to Kazakhstan in 2022. In Kazakhstan, many histories, ideas, beliefs and hopes have met together. As Kazakhstan's president Kassim Jomart Okhav put it. The people of Kazakhstan have absorbed the traditions of various civilizations and religions. Along with the spirit of tolerance and openness. Therefore, the principle of unity and diversity is fundamental to us. Dear session participants. Kazakhstan strongly supports the 2023 UN General Assembly Resolution on Interface Dialogue and Countering Hate Speech. As well as the UN Plan of Action to Safeguard Religious Sites. We are firmly convinced that protecting religious sites is more than just a matter of physical security or legal regulation. It is a profound challenge that requires a multifaceted, coordinated and thoughtful approach. It begins not just with laws but with a culture of dialogue. With the ability to listen and to and respect one another and with the readiness. To see diversity as a source of strength, not a threat. We believe that mutual trust and understanding among peoples and faith. Form the foundation upon which we must build lasting peace in the twenty-first century. This is why since gaining independence, Kazakhstan has consistently worked to strengthen unity, understanding and interface harmony. Both within our country and on the international stage. It was on this historical, spiritual and political foundation that the idea. For the Congress of Leaders of World and Traditional Religions was born in 2003. This was one of the first forums of the twenty-first century to bring together leaders of Islam. Christian denominations, Judaism, Buddhism, Hinduism, Shintaism and other religions on a single platform. The Congress is intended to demonstrate the peaceful and constructive essence of all world religions. Around the same time, in two thousand and five, the Alliance of Civilizations was established under the auspices of the UN. To strengthen interreligious and intercultural dialogue, mutual understanding and cooperation. The Congress and the Alliance share common goals and values. Both emerged in response to rising mistrust, growing tension and polarization within the global community. We highly value our longstanding and constructive partnership and cooperation with the UN Alliance of Civilizations. Kazakhstan shares the Alliance strategic vision. Which is focused on fostering mutual understanding between cultures, countering extremism on terrorism. And preventing conflicts based on religious, racial and ethnic differences. We are proud that this special session has brought together the Alliance of Civilizations and the Congress. In a joint effort for peace and harmony. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen. This year, the international community marks two significant dates. The eightieth anniversary of the end of World War Two. And the eighth anniversary of the founding of the United Nations. Despite the tragic lessons of the twentieth century and our long journey toward peace. We once again face destructive wars and conflicts, rising polarization and growing mistrust. We see forces exploiting these tensions to spread radical ideologies inside xenophobia and amplify hate speech. All of this is amplified by the unprecedented capabilities of modern digital technologies. In these circumstances, protecting religious sites remains crucial. But unfortunately, the global situation also compels us to speak about the protection of human lives. We watch with deep concern the devastating conflicts in Ukraine, Gaza and other parts of the world. The pain and suffering of civilians touch the hearts of people of all faiths. At a time when humanity is confronted with violence, hatred and cruelty. It's vital to remember the universal message of all religions. Compassion, mercy and humanity. Today, more than ever, we must listen to the call to love our neighbor. Regardless of their nationality, religion and beliefs. The world needs peace now more than ever. Kazakhstan consistently advocates for the peaceful resolution of conflicts, the protection of civilians. And the unconditional observance of international humanitarian law. We believe that regardless of country, race, faith or culture, we are all united by. The universal aspirations for peace and security, quality education and care for family. Community and spiritual values. This is true source of solidarity and hope for humankind. We believe it's critical for all constructive forces to unite. As President Okhav has said, the world needs a new global movement for peace. I am confident that through our joint efforts, the Alliance of Civilizations and the Congress. Will contribute to concrete steps in this direction. I am sure the ideas and thoughts shared here will be reflected in concrete actions. For the benefit of peace and our shared future. I wish all participants fruitful discussions and successful implementation of the decisions we reach together. Thank you.
So now I give the floor to the Director of United Nations Alliance of Civilizations, Mrs. Nikhal Sath, to make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency Mr. Miguel Moratinos, Your Excellency the Honorable Mr. Maulen Asimbayev. Thank you very much for giving me the floor. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, eminences and distinguished guests. And I'm very pleased to be giving you a very brief presentation of where we are regarding the United Nations. Plan of Action for Safeguarding Religious Sites, which was developed by the United Nations Alliance of Civilizations. In twenty nineteen and it was launched in 2019. Basically, this is, this gathering today is a follow-up of. Part of the implementation of the action plan. Because we actually convened a global conference in Kashkais, Portugal. Which was recommended by, by the plan, by the plan when it was launched. But allow me first to say few words since the Senate of the Parliament of the Republic of Kazakhstan is leading. The, the organization and of the Congress of Leaders of World and Traditional Religions. We might as well want to think a little bit about constitutions and the laws governing. Certain legislations when it comes to the protection of religious sites. As the High Representative for the Alliance of Civilizations just mentioned in his remarks that. The main responsibility for the protection of religious sites and safeguarding the safety of the worshipers. Primarily lies with member states. Almost the majority of constitutions contain articles that ensure the freedom of religion or belief. They also contain clauses on how the state approaches religious freedom. Guided by these statements, parliaments are tasked with ironing out the details of how religions or beliefs present. Within the state, present within the state are integrated into or protected by the legislative framework of the state. Which may be secular and or influenced by religion or belief. And although the members of parliament and religious leaders have different mandates. They share the common goal of serving their communities and promoting their well-being. They can be allies in our common cause for social justice and peaceful coexistence. Now moving to the UN Plan of Action to Safeguard Religious Sites, which was developed by UNEOC. The plan provides a framework for action to better prevent, prepare. And respond to possible attacks against religious sites. It also encourages collaboration among stakeholders to build trust, information sharing, partnership. And joint action and that's why we are gathered here today because we have the various stakeholders. Which are responsible and have a responsibility for the protection of religious sites. The plan recommends among other actions strengthening intercultural and interfaith dialogue as a tool. Contributing to promoting respect, diversity and religious tolerance. And that's why United Nations Alliance of Civilization continues to maintain a leading role within the UN system in this area. Through facilitating global platform of faith actors and cultural icons that is widely acknowledged. For their valuable contribution to strengthening understanding and dialogue and to address religious bigotry. If we go to the, if we go to the slide that we have in this short presentation. Part of the recommendations also in addition to strengthening intercultural, interreligious dialogue was mapping of religious sites in, in, in. interreligious dialogue, was mapping of religious sites in several countries. We have selected Sweden and we communicated with the government of Sweden, who approved or agreed to have a mapping of their religious sites. And this brings me also to the next slide, where we, the results of the mapping exercise that we have in Sweden, where we tracked 4,438 religious sites, representing 13 different denominations. The mapping exercise is working in progress in Argentina. We've had some hiccups there, but then I think that the map is completed in Argentina, mapping religious sites there, but it's not yet public and it's not yet posted online where it is made accessible publicly. The mapping exercise was done and developed jointly with the United Nations Operational Satellite Applications Program, or the UNOSAT. It is quite an expensive exercise and that's why we are kind of slow in moving forward with other countries because of the shortage and the scarcity of the financial resources to do so. And we hope that we will be able to continue the mapping of the religious sites in other countries as we try to mobilize other member states to fund the mapping of religious exercise. The second recommendation of the Plan of Action was convening of a global conference to safeguard religious sites. And as I said earlier, I mentioned briefly that we did convene the first global conference on safeguarding religious sites last November, when we organized our 10th global forum in Kashkayish in Portugal. And we addressed there this critical role that various stakeholders must play in safeguarding religious sites. And that's why we had many representations from member states, from religious leaders, from civil society organizations. We had 21 member states take part in that global conference. We had 16 religious leaders and faith-based organizations representing the different faith denominations. And we had seven international organizations participate in the conference. In addition to civil society representatives, I see also that there were a lot of, many of those who came and participated in our conference are present here in this room. As I mentioned, the Honorable Mr. Muran Ashim Bayef and His Virtue Allah Shakur Pasha Zada, the Chairman of the Caucus of Muslims Board, also was addressing the opening session in Kashkayish in Portugal. And also, we had a representation from the Office of His Eminence, the Grand Muti of Egypt, participate in the conference. Moving to the communications campaign, which was also part of the recommendations of the plan. The communications plan is still ongoing and I think it will continue. We encourage the participation of all the stakeholders in the communication plan. We have so far, after we've developed hashtag for safe worship, we had 6.2 million in total social media reach and 2.1 million impressions for posts across major platforms. We continue to strengthen that communications campaign and we encourage others as well to be taking part in it. I think that this brings me to the end of this presentation to briefing you on where we stand with the implementation of the Plan of Action. We continue our work and I think that we all hope that this follow-up session today is going to mobilize the implementation of the plan, take it further. And we come up with concrete recommendations again on how to move forward. We look forward to listening also and benefiting from your good practices in your own denomination and in your own and member states who have good practices in the protection of religious sites to benefit from that. Take it as recommendations and put it as the next phase of the implementation of the action plan. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Nikhal. Before the departure of our dear friend, you know, Excellency Mr. Maulana, she have a lot of engagement and starting the participation and the speeches of all of you. So let me thank you again and we'll see you tomorrow for sure. And again, thank you for being with us and convening this special meeting. Thank you. Thank you. So we are going to start the intervention. We have make a list, it has been distributed. And so I'm going to give the floor. The first speaker will be His Eminence Dr. Nazir Mohammed Ayad, Grand Muti of Egypt, President of General Secretary for Fatwa Authorities World War. You have the floor.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil alameen. The Most Karmic. Ahshab al-ma'ali wal-makarim. As-saddatul-ulamah. Praise to be God, Lord of the worlds. And may peace and blessings be upon our Master and Patron Mohammed and upon his family and companions altogether. Your Excellencies, esteemed scholars, representatives of religions, peace, mercy and blessings of God be upon you.
And so at the beginning of this speech, it gives me great pleasure to extend my highest expressions of gratitude and appreciation to the leadership and people of the Republic of Kazakhstan in recognition of their kind invitation to participate in the event of this blessed session. This session represents a continuation of Kazakhstan's diligent efforts in building cultural and religious bridges. And our meeting today in this extraordinary session of the United Nations Alliance of Civilizations under the theme "Safeguarding of Religious Sites" comes at a critical time when the world faces rapid challenges, rapid challenges targeting humanity's common heritage, especially religious symbols that embody the spiritual and cultural identity of nations. And this makes this session a global platform for uniting efforts and affirming responsibility to protect these sites and safeguard their sensitivity thereby reinforcing the collective message of peace and tolerance shared by all religions. We ask Almighty God to bless all our efforts with success. Distinguished colleagues, religious sites are part of humanity's rich heritage, embodying eternal human and religious values. They represent human and religious civilizations across history. And therefore, it's necessary to preserve them and pass them on future generations just as our ancestors preserved and passed them down through their ages. And from this deep awareness of this value and of these sites, Islamic law has provided explicit protection for religious sites. God Almighty says, "And were it not that God repels people, some by means of others churches, synagogues, monasteries and mosques, wherein the name of God is much mentioned." And the meaning is clear. Were it not for God's protection, people's places of worship in every era would have been destroyed. Churches in the time of Moses, synagogues in the time of Jesus and mosques in the time of Mohammed. And moreover, Islam has prohibited the destruction of places of worship, not only in times of peace but also during times of war. It was reported from Abu Bakr al-Siddiq that he said, "Do not be treacherous, do not deceive, do not cowardly and do not corrupt the land, do not burn or cut down palm trees, do not slaughter livestock and do not destroy places of worship." And without doubt, wars are among the gravest threats to religious sites as they bring widespread destruction with devastating weapons. And frequently, when an enemy occupies a city, it burns or destroys it. In modern times, these risks have increased due to bombs, aircraft, heavy artillery, missiles, which cause massive damage to cities and villages. Statistics from World War II show that thousands of historical buildings were destroyed. In addition to war-related destruction, lack of awareness among citizens about the importance of cultural and architectural heritage also contributes to harmful practices against this enduring legacy. And the danger increases when such ignorance is combined with extremist ideologies, leading to disregard for the civilization and human value of this great heritage. Distinguished participants, we reject any hostile acts directed against historical monuments or works of art that constitute the cultural and spiritual heritage of peoples. For most, among these are places of worship, which are cornerstone of building humanity's cultural and spiritual heritage. In this context, we reject and condemn all forms of violence, sabotage and destruction perpetrated by the Zionist occupation in Palestine, from the holy city of Jerusalem and the demolition of its landmarks to the blatant violation today in Gaza and the West Bank against this sensitivity of religious and historical sites. We ask bitterly, where is international law regarding this deliberate destruction of religious and historical sites? Where is the Universal Declaration of Human Rights? Where is UNESCO's law? Where are the Geneva Convention on the Protection of Heritage and Religious Sites? We affirm that the authority of the Zionist entity as an occupying power with no legitimate right to make any changes to religious or historical sites in Palestine, whether through demolition, Judaization or destruction. It disregards values, ignores the voice of justice and shows no fear of law or respect for divine principles. From this responsibility, our vision for protecting religious sites is embodied in the necessity of enhancing interface dialogue and cooperation, the importance of strengthening values of peace and tolerance and all forms of violence and extremism targeting these sites and the need to activate relevant international laws. It's also essential to strengthen the role of religious communities in building global peace and protecting religious heritage. We also call for motivating communities to work toward protecting planet Earth and religious sites, integrating religious values into peace initiatives and enhancing cooperation among religious institutions and organizations in different countries to confront urgent global challenges, for most of which is the protection of religious sites. In this framework, we commend the pioneering efforts exerted by Egypt in protecting human heritage in general. These sites have received great care as an integral part of humanity's memories and civilizational identity. And this has been achieved through sincere and extensive efforts led by His Excellency President Abdel Fattih El-Sasi, who launched many national initiatives to develop these religious and historical sites. And also, this Egyptian experience has become an inspiring model in the field of protecting human heritage and preserving eternal religious values. And these efforts have not been limited to protecting heritage within Egypt's borders, but have extended internationally through supporting UN initiatives for the preservation of human heritage and providing technical expertise in restoration and rehabilitation projects after wars and disasters. And this reflects Egypt's firm belief in its pioneer role. In conclusion, I hope that this meeting will be a starting point towards strengthening effective tools for the protection of religious sites and preserving them from anything that may harm them now or in the future. Thank you so much for your attention. Peace, mercy and blessings of God be upon you.
Spasibo balsheu. Ego, vysokopresvechenshento, vladimir Nazir Mohammed Ayad, za takie teploye slova. Sieszac, ja by хотел predajet slovo jeho dobrodetele, šejku lislamu. Allah shakur, pasha zada, prosím, slovo predostavляje se vám.
So for more than distinguished participants of the following event, for more than two decades, we have witnessed the fruitful activities of both the United Nations Alliance of Civilization and the highly esteemed Astana Congresses, which inspire us with their achievements in promoting dialogue for the sake of humanity. I have the honor to warmly greet all of you at today's special joint session, which has become the result of our joint cooperation. And I pray to the Almighty Creator to grant success to the work of our gathering. I sincerely support the initiative to hold today's meeting and emphasize its exceptionally important significance in a polarized world faced with a real nuclear threat, where manifestation of xenophobia and calls for hatred, inciting conflicts on national, religious and racial grounds are growing. And the restoration of trust on a global scale is a necessary condition for building a just and prosperous future in addressing global problems related to peace and the future. The ideas of peaceful coexistence, a culture of mutual understanding dialogue and cooperation between civilizations and religions and multiculturalism acquired special importance. And as the President of the Republic of Azerbaijan, Mr. Ilham Ali, has noted that intercivilization and intercultural dialogue is one of the most urgent tasks of our time. And it's noteworthy that the Alliance of Civilization under the auspices of the UN, with a history already spanning 80 years, has always paid particular attention to this important direction. So distinguished participants, modern challenges present humanity with serious trials. As a result of the spread of the ideology of hatred, we observe increasing cases of insult to the sacred values and symbols of religions and the abuse of the name of religion for political purposes. We strongly condemn any manifestation of radicalism and xenophobia under the guise of freedom, of expression or religious affiliation, especially acts of terror and vandalism directed against holy sites, religious objects, cultural heritage, sites and monuments. We must more actively resist those who, for provocative and political purposes, abuse the name of religions, whose very foundational lies in universal human values. And we must protest again against any disrespect towards religious shrines, symbols and figures anywhere in the world, as well as against calls for hatred. as well as against calls for hatred leading to national and religious conflicts. We call for an end to the bloody clashes that are troubling the world today and causing the death of innocent people in the Middle East, in the Gaza Strip. And we call for weapons to fall silent for the destruction of material and spiritual heritage. As you know, Azerbaijan restored its internationally recognized territorial integrity and sovereignty precisely in accordance with the UN Charter and the UN Security Council resolution. Today, Azerbaijani state is restoring sites and villages in the liberated territories, reviving and reconstructing our national, religious, and spiritual heritage, which was subjected to destruction and as a result of acts of vandalism. Distinguished participants of the event, as a religious leader, I'm convinced that in order to prevent attempts at a clash of civilization and to solve global problems alongside the norms of international law, an appeal to universal moral values is necessary. We discussed this in detail last year at the anniversary forum of the UN Alliance of Civilizations in Khazais, and emphasized that the name has come to establish an advisory body of religious leaders. In this regard, I view today's joint special meeting of the Alliance of Civilizations and the Astana Congress, which thanks to their rich and valuable experience, have formed as effective platforms for dialogue and cooperation and as a highly successful step. And I wish them success and pray to the Almighty for the blessing of our efforts for the sake of humanity. And may the Almighty Creator protect the earth and humanity. Amen.
Thank you very much. Your very warm words. Now I move to Dr. Mitchell Abt, Secretary General of the Middle East Council of Churches, to have the floor.
Шукран, сауфа атакалму бил арабия. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to provide my speech in Arab language. This is my mother's tongue, so I can be frank. I can frankly speak in my language. I'd like to talk about the... I have a huge number of articles in English languages, so I will send them to you later. And as they say, I don't think that any region in the world for a huge number of years... So we see that we have... I don't repeat the topics of my colleagues because this is the same context. That's why I just want to say that I totally agree with my colleagues, what was mentioned before. I'd like to talk about the destruction of religious sites. Firstly, it's about the knowledge, it's about the cognitive part of it. In spite of religion and in spite of monoistic religion or any other, we had a conference in December of 2021 together with the Church Soviet in Iraq. And we saw that in Iraq, we have sixteen religions. And they can be monistic or traditional. And what I'd like to say is that the community always had various types of options in terms of communication with Almighty, in terms of getting knowledge from Him. In Christianity, it's... Can be the same because because it always... There is a various types of options in terms of that. So that's why when we see the ancient monoistic religions, we always evolve, we can't distract them. We have to see through the cognitive point of view in terms of knowledge of Almighty. We have to understand Almighty's view and our attempts on how to understand Him. Within the following context, cognitive aspect, in spite of any religion, religion is considered as the form of knowledge of Almighty. So for me, it... This is... It can be considered as a cognitive process. So that's why we have to observe it. We have to cover it within the knowledge of ours. Maybe human created all these religions and all these forms of knowledge in order to understand Almighty. And in different civilizations, they have been creating different religions, different faiths, different forms of knowledge. And for now, yeah, we have the opportunity to unite it all, to gather it all. Secondly, as for destruction of religion sites, I was a witness of cruel words in Middle East Syria, Kurds, Yazid, and any other minorities within the Middle East. They suffered. I saw how all their sites were distracted. And religion sites are considered as the part of our history. And that's why there is need to save and to preserve the memory of ours because sites are considered as the memories of people. So that's why we can't distract... We can't distract our memory. We have to preserve it. We have a huge number of religions. We have the huge number of... A huge amount of memory, so... And all this shows that we have the faith towards Almighty. Memories are vital. This is the part of... Within the way of education, within the way of knowledge. Also, as for distractions, they are closely connected with attacks. It can be a direct attack or from... Because of the military actions, maybe because of the terroristic acts, maybe because of the governmental efforts. And countries choose some of the various types of reasons. For example, there is a sites of thousands of... They are really old and... Also, there is a connection between religions. religions... Between religions, we have to have respect. And despite of different people, different religions, we have to respect each other. We have to have communication, bonds, strong links. And in spite of what you think or which particular religion you have, which particular faith you have, your values, we have to respect it, we always have to consider it. And this approach in terms of... You know that in some countries within the Middle East, we... Some of the sites are fully distracted. And it means that this is all the... As the result of... As the result of that, we... Our lack of knowledge, we have aggression. And we have some actions, which is called war against satanization. It... Because it leads to some other distractions. So that's why we have to battle against it. All for infrastructural issue. Because there is always different type of reasons. As a reason, we call it as destruction of culture or genocide. All this are considered as the destructive part of culture that some of the groups has... It can be groups, it can be countries. Call it as you wish. We see it right now. We see it in different Middle East. In Lebanon and in other neighboring countries. And for now, we... In spite of that, we have some achievements in terms of religious sites with the help of legislation, with the help of amendments. And maybe we have to put some new efforts in order to change the laws and in order to preserve the sovereignty of these countries. In my own research, I mentioned about the... My... I provided my concerns about the Syria and religious sites in that particular region. And I made some pictures of the results as a result of destruction of sites. All what was mentioned, all your suggestions are really vital. We have to have declaration, we have to have convention in terms of safeguarding of religious sites in order to make it the part of common community, common society that we have to spread around the world, that we have to spread around the religious leaders, religious cultures in order to preserve our culture. Thank you so much for your attention.
Спасибо большое. Сейчас я хочу передать слово господину Мухаммаду Аддель Саламу. Спасибо большое, мой дорогой друг.
So ladies and gentlemen, at our meeting today, I greet you once again on this blessed land, a land of openness and communication. And this is another step on the path that has become a hallmark of our journey together toward the better tomorrow. Yeah, we have a huge number... We are united by a common goal to seek harmony in our diverse world. So the following topic... So our world with this variety of cultures, experiences, languages, identities, and rich plurality. And we... Indeed, the efforts of the Republic of Kazakhstan have become a prominent sign in bringing civilization and religion closer together, especially through dialogue between religions, the leadership of President Tokhaev, His Excellency, Mr. Maulina Shembayev, Chairman of the Senate. And now where is this more evident than in Astana? The Kazakh capital hosting for the eighth time this congress that brings together religious leaders and prominent intellectuals, a journey that has now lasted nearly a quarter of a century. Our vision of a dialogue in this distinguished forum goes far beyond mere words. It's about establishing a culture of true exchange. The aim of interface dialogue is not limited to rituals or formalities, but is rooted in courage and determination, creating a balanced vision of the self and of the other. And and I... So so I'm confident that I will receive all speeches of my colleagues that were mentioned before because this is a really vital topics. And we also pay a huge attention to that. And indeed, the following attention goes from two parts. First, because the last point that were in our document that were signed with Pope Francis in 2022, it was signed by Sheikh Al-Hayam. And thank you so much for Pope Francis. And the following point that was added about the safeguarding of religion sites is considered as the honor. And this has to be the most important part in every document. And attack on sites are considered as the violation. And the following point was the last within the Brotherhood documentation. And I brought it to Vatican. It was observed with Pope Francis. And Mr. Iman said that that today we see on how we see all that bad conditions in Syria, Iraq. And I'd like to provide the following point to Pope Francis. And he told me that we have to make it to the document. The second part is closely connected with the document is the plan action of the UN in terms of safeguarding of religious sites and prayer places. And for my opinion, this is one of the greatest achievements that you've done, distinguished Mr. Martinius, and within the UN and within the Alliance of Civilizations. When we're talking about the safeguarding of religious sites, it's indeed talking about the safeguarding of people's humanities, culture. Because we see threats in terms of these religious sites in Palestine, Gaza. And and we see that everyone, everything was distracted. Trees, people, places, buildings. And religious sites that were... That was established in fifth century. Now it distracted from the sight of aggressors in the sector of Gaza. Also religious sites in Alia Shahr. We don't discriminate. Discriminated, we count it as the important parts. In conclusion, I'd like to say that we need... an international alliance in terms of preserve of this object. This is what we need right now. This is the idea that we proposed already with the Mister Supreme Imam. And on how we can provide an international conference in terms of this topic uh, that is closely connected with the UN plan. And on behalf of the Muslim, uh, council and on behalf of its name of the Supreme Imam, I'd like to say that we are ready to cooperate with you, distinguished Mister Martinius and to provide the following conference. Thank you so much, wish you all the best.
Spasibo balsheue. Evopreusidestam Muhammed Abdal Salam, General Secretary of the Soviet Muslimanshiq Starishin. Za takoy hroshu vystuplenie, siesas ya pachatela perdat slova gospadinu Ravino Davidu Antebisaka, prestavitelu glavnogov Safardskogov Ravino Izraela.
Thank you. On behalf of the Sephardic Chief Rabbi of Israel, Rabbi W. Yusef.
Spasibo balsheue. Uh, ritch at имени Sephardskogov Glavnogov Ravino Izraela, Ravino Davidu Yusefa. Vashya preusidestva, gospadin presidenta Republiky Kazakstan, gospadin Tokhaev, ksojeleni gozdisniet, vashya preusidestva.
Martinus. Distinguished representative of the United Nations, esteem leaders of relig- of religious, ladies and gentlemen. First allowed me to express my deepest gratitude for the invitation and the warm hospitality extended to us at this important session and in the congress. Our gathering here in Astana. It is a testament of the power of cooperation among nations and faith in the service of noble goal, the safeguarding of the religious sites across the world. In Judaism, a special emphasis is placed on respect of the deceased, of the deceased. Our sages teach us, even after the end of a person, of a person's life, the body retains in sanctity. And the final resting place, the grave, must be protected from any violation and desecration. This belief stems us, stems from the conviction that the soul is eternal and continues to exist beyond physical life. Thus, harm to grave is not seen merely as attack on an history or heritage, but as profound assault on a dignity, on eternal nature of the human being. This issue is very important to the Rabbi Yusef, as I am his representative, because it's not only a matter of faith. It's also an history, a family history of him. Several decades ago, his father, he also was a chief rabbi, his father, Rabbi Wadi Yusef. He was informed that there is a development road project in Egypt which threatened ancient Jewish cemeteries. He personally met the president Husni Bobarak. He went to Egypt to meet him. And he told him that it must protect the cemetery, the Jewish cemetery, and prevent this project. In his appeal, Rabbi Yusef wrote a letter. I brought you, I brought you here, the letter that the Rabbi Wadi Yusef, when he was a chief rabbi in Israel. He wrote it to the government of Egypt and he sent it to the president Husni Bobarak, asking him not to attack, not to touch the cemetery, the Jewish cemetery in Egypt. And this letter really moved the Egyptian, the Egyptian leadership to act. And the president Husni Bobarak ordered to stop the works and not to touch the cemetery. That episode demonstrate how dialogue and mutual respect between relig- religious leaders and statements can transform principles into concur- into con- concrete protection for sites of memory and dignity. Sadly, Jewish cemeteries around the world have often been neglected, neglected, vandalized or even destroyed. Tombstones have been sharted, sharted burial grounds uprooted, sometimes in, sometimes in times of conflict, sometimes through indifference and sometimes motivated by hearted. This underline the shared responsibility that falls upon us only, not only toward the Jewish people, but toward all humanity. Burial sites of every religion and tradition are living witnesses of people and communities. Protecting them is not an integral part of a global struggle against hearted intolerance and religious violence. Therefore, I call for your, for ongoing cooperation between governments, religious leaders and local communities. Together, we must ensure that every grave, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, Buddhist, Shinto and any other faith is preserved with dignity, shielded from vandalism and accessible to descendants and believers. I particularly wish to highlight the role of interfaith dialogue. When religious leaders in different countries join for- join forces, they send a clear message. The sanctity of life and the dead is not, is a universal value, transcending borders, culture and land and languages. Such dialogue is not only a tool of prevent the conflict, but also a bridge of peace, trust and mutual understanding. Ladies and gentlemen, the safeguarding of religious sites and particular Jewish cemeteries across the world global is not only an historical religious duty. It is a moral test for an international community. As long as we protect the sacred sites of others, we may also hope that our own will be protected. These words I share today in the name of the Rabbi, of the Sephardic Rabbi Yusef, as a call of mutual respect, international cooperation and shared responsibility. Let us strengthen international cooperation and mutual assistance in this field so that together, we may ensure that every commi- every community's sacred sites are safeguarded, honored and prevent for generous to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rabbi David Antebisaka, Representative, Chief Sephardic Rabbi of Israel. And I give the floor to Rabbi Alshlomo Ben Ashen Cook, Representative, Chief Ashkenazi Rabbi of Israel.
Your Excellency, Mister Martinus, representatives of the Republic of Kazakhstan, dear, dear leaders and friends. Is it my privilege to be here in beautiful Astana already for ten years? The weather outside may be cold, but the welcome here is always warm. We feel the true will of the leaders of the Republic of Kazakhstan to promote the values of love, brotherhood, brotherhood, peace and friendship. At the beginning, I want to thank the former Chief Rabbi of Israel, genius Rabbi, Icra Kiyosef, whom I had the honor to represent here for ten years. Since the beginning of the congress, twenty-three years ago, the Chief Rabinate of Israel has sent rabbis to represent it here and the ideas, the important ideas. This year, I have the honor to represent the newly elected Ashkenazi Chief Rabbi of Israel, genius Rabbi Kalman Mayber, who is on his way and will join tomorrow to the great gathering of religious leaders. Let me begin with a word about fear. Just a few days ago, the shocking murder of Charlie Kirk in the United States showed the danger of a world where people cannot listen to a different opinion. This is, this tragedy is a warning for all humanity. I also this fear in my own country. Last year, I was invited to moderate an official interfaith meeting organized by the Ministry of Interior in Israel. The meeting was held in a hotel in Jerusalem, in the city of Jerusalem, not political at all. Its only purpose was to stand together, religious leaders, and to say in one voice, violence and attacks against holy sites must stop. But some leaders didn't come, not because they didn't want to, but because they were afraid. Even to be seen in such meeting could put them at a risk. This fear shows why our gathering here in Astana is so important. At the same time, let me share something personal. In Jewish tradition, every grave is holy, not only the graves of the great leaders, but every grave of every human being. This comes from our deep belief in eternal life and in eternal soul. The place that shows this more than any other is the cemetery Mount of Olives in Jerusalem, one of the most important places in the Jewish tradition. According to our faith, the prophets are buried there. And from this place, resurrection will begin as part of our belief in redem- in redemption and the coming of Messiah. For thousands of years, tens of thousands of Jews have been buried there. Sadly, even this holy place of dead Jewish people suffer from harassment, attacks and even acts of terror. I must, I myself not been able for many years to visit the graves of my grandparents who were killed in a car accident and buried, and are buried in the Mount of Olives in Jerusalem, not by choice, but, but out of fear. Many others are not able to visit the graves of their loved ones because they fear from their own lives. Protecting holy places is a global mission. It is the duty of every state and of all of us as an international community to act firmly against those who harm holy places. And here I speak directly to the representative of the United Nations present with us. The responsi- the responsibility to ensure the protection of religious sites is a moral test for the whole world. We cannot allow our holy stones to become targets for hatred and violence. Before I close, I must speak from the pain of my people. Forty-eight hostages who were taken from their beds, from their homes, are still held in Gaza tunnels. They have been here, there for seven hundred and eleven days and nights. Every single day and night is like eternity for the families, waiting without an answer. This is a test for humanity, whether we can protect innocent lives and bring them back home soon. And finally, I return my first point. Our gathering here is not simple or obvious. In a world where some are afraid even to attend an infaith meetings, our presence here together is already a powerful message. We are protecting not only stones, but also the soul of humanity. These holy stones are not just walls, they are the living heart of faith, of culture, of a human identity. As we say in Jewish tradition, there are people with a heart of stone and there are stones with the heart of a man, of people. I will end with a prayer. God, the creator of the world, will give wisdom to humanity to abandon terror and to hold on the values of love and peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rabbi Alshlomo Ben Ashen Cook, Representative of Chief Ashkenazi Rabbi of Israel for your intervention. And now I give the floor to Excellency Monsieur Jean Christophe Pocel, Ambassador. To la parol.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Je comprends que je peux m'exprimer en français, qu'il y a une traduction depuis le français? Je serai plus à l'aise. Merci beaucoup. Et puis je dois vous confesser mon membre parce que mon...
Yeah, so thank you so much. I'd like to say that for my speech, uh, is in, within the computer, but I have some issues with computers, so I just memorized what I have. So that's why I will try to provide my speech. Firstly, I'd like to, uh, thank the representatives of the government of the Republic of Kazakhstan for provision of such an event as the congress and within the following congress of traditional leaders. Uh, it led us to observe some of the issues that are really important. And also I'd like to thank the Alliance of Civilization and General Secretary of the following alliance. Uh, one year ago, we were in Portugal and we were discussing the following issues. And I think that, uh, this is a really vital to, uh, cover the following issues again, to discuss all that again, because what is important in terms of that? We have to keep going and we have to find the answers for that issues. We have to discuss all that topics because they need a cultural approach. They need an educational governmental approach in long-term basis. Also, I'd like to leave some of the thoughts of mine in terms of that question. Firstly, is about our daily life. We were talking about that already in Gaza Strip, in Sudan. And our current realities show that conflicts keep distract the planet Earth and the humanity. It keep, it keeps distracting our religious sites. Uh, I don't want to provide some of the details in terms of that, but I just want to say about the religious sites in Gaza Strip for now. This is the important issue that really urgent and it needs a mobilization of every participant, of every diplomats, of every politicians, civil societies, religious leaders in order to stop it, in order to stop all that conflict that kills people, that distracts sites, especially religious sites. Second, my thought that I'd like to share with you is that the following issue is not limited only with the preservation of religious sites of conflict countries. It also closely connected, uh, with my own country. We are not within the conflict, we don't have conflicts, such countries that I mentioned before. But in spite of that, on a regular basis, we can have some of the attacks towards religious sites, towards religious commons, to religious churches, mosques. Maybe some of the abuses, uh, we can see in, in the walls of churches or attempts of arson. And people, especially French government, always is trying to raise the following issue. So that's why the following topic is of particular importance on the agenda, not only within the conflict countries. And we have to find, we can't lose our religious sites. And we have to stay against all that approaches. And if you walk in by through the France, you will see some of the churches that are closed because they faced some of the violations, they faced some attacks. And this is also on government's responsibility. Government has to invest within the preservation of religious sites. I'd like to say that in France, Mister Emmanuel Macron launched a special program in terms of preservation of religious sites. And I hope that it will lead in a polit- And I hope that it will lead in a political level. We have to define religious sites and design a special economical program, a special financial program. Without all that, we can't develop in a long-term basis. Third point, when within the government we have a huge number of religious sites, the issue is about rehabilitation, is about the provision of importance to the following sites. We also have to have expertise procedures. We have to have a special amount of appropriate knowledge. We have to have special specialists in terms of that. When we were doing some of the preservation procedures in churches in France, we discovered that we have to raise an old specialist, an old profession who were responsible for stone designing and in order to restore it, in order to preserve it. So that's why it means that we have to launch within the political level the need of education for such people. And because we can't lose our historians, we can't lose such specialists. The next point is the issue of education, is the issue of bringing up people. Because it's highly important to provide such a sense of importance to our young people, to our young kids, because it's important to make them adequate. They have to have this idea within them in terms of preservation of religious sites. In spite of that, for example, a church in Paris, it's a Catholic church that is located in Paris. This is a religious place of Catholic people. But during the fire, during the vandalism acts, we saw that a huge number of, not only Catholic, but a huge number of representatives of various types of confessions took participation within the preservation, within the rehabilitation of the following church. I saw a huge number of young schoolchildren who participated in that. As a conclusion, I'd like to talk about the Notre Dame Church in Kashkayesh. One year ago, we already mentioned the following aspect in terms of construction, in terms of rehabilitation. It was about one month until opening. And I've participated within the opening ceremony of the new church in Paris. I saw the beauty of the following site. And I told that it's like I didn't see my favorite woman for five years. It's like the same feelings. And I realized, when I saw it, I realized how beautiful that is. So now I see how the whole population took participation within the following construction. And since the December of the following year, nine million people visited the following church. Nine million people, that's incredible. That's incredible. And it says that the following church is considered not just a church, but as the vital place, as the vital site, as the place for pray. But in spite of that, the door of the following church is open for everyone, for any person, for any confession. And I think that it says a lot. It says that this is the motivation for hope. This is a room for hope in order to make us united, in order to make us mobilized within the preservation of and safeguarding of religious sites. Thank you so much for your attention, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Dr. Francis Kuria, Secretary General of Relief for Peace, Secretary General of African Council of Religious Leaders for Peace. My dear friend Francis, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. Your Excellencies, your Eminences, my Lordships, distinguished leaders, citizens of Astania, receive warm greetings of peace. Thank you for your warm reception and hospitality since we arrived in your city and country. I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to both the International Center of Interfaith and Interreligious Dialogue and the Eighth Congress of World Leaders for co-organizing this special session and the opportunity to address this salient discussion of safeguarding religious sites. It is with utmost urgency that we address the current conditions that have brought us here today, as well as our sacred responsibility to advocate for the protection of holy sites that have become vulnerable to desecration, vandalism, destruction, and violence. For over fifty years, Religions for Peace has galvanized a global movement of dedicated religious leaders from different faiths working towards common action. One of our priorities alone was being an unwavering advocacy in the safeguarding of freedom of religious worship and within it, religious worship sites, essential to our practices and to our communities. Religious sites are more than the physical structures in which we worship. They are centers of community and connection. They are essential if we are to protect the freedom of religious thought, conscience, and belief. They are a beacon of identity, dignity, and the shared essence of humanity. More than that, they are practical spaces of peace, sanctuaries during humanitarian crisis, safe houses for refugees, and others fleeing violence, beloved sites of sacred convergence. When these spaces are threatened by violence, hatred, and intolerance, the souls of communities, the history that exists as a succession of these sacred places are also at risk. In a world of rising intolerance, religious sites are susceptible to cultural degradation and environmental exploitation, leaving people across the world without a safe space to worship and communities without a protected center. In the last few years alone, hundreds of people have lost their lives at the sacred spaces that they were meant to protect them and in over one hundred countries have experienced attacks or desecration of religious sacred sites. This destruction of religious sites defies the necessary freedom of religion and belief by stripping worshippers of a place where they feel safe to practice. In 2011, Religions for Peace released the Universal Code of Conduct on Holy Sites, adopted by thousands across our global movement. The code offers practical guidelines for protecting places of worship and includes a bold call for cooperation between faith communities, governments, and civil society. Since then, many of our interreligious councils across the globe have implemented parts of this code. As an example, in Bosnia and Herzegovina, the Interreligious Council there spearheaded a project of systematic reporting of attacks of holy sites, interfaith public condemnation of violence, and active engagement of stakeholders such as the police, media, and local political leaders, directly leading to a decrease in holy site destruction. Our actions are inspired by countries that have championed the protection of sacred sites. Our gracious host country of Kazakhstan is a beacon of influence in this regard with their constitution of mandate that fiercely protects all holy sites. I urge each and every one of you in this forum as leaders and vital members of your community to take inspiration from our hosts and the United Nations Alliance of Civilization's plan of action to safeguard holy sites. We must promote our own sacred spaces and houses of worship as safe places for multi-faith dialogue, which champion freedom of belief, thought, and conscience. Work in our communities to address the underlying causes of violence, inequality, intolerance, hate, and the unwillingness to learn from others. And lastly, we must advocate to our government and international bodies to prioritize protection of sacred sites, both explicitly in laws and policies and implicitly in social and behavioral change. Every human deserves a place to worship free from fear, no matter their religion. We must recognize that in safeguarding religious sites, we are also safeguarding community, history, and identity, and the lives of worshippers that exist within these spaces. Let our combined efforts ensure the preservation of sacred spaces everywhere, a crucial component of achieving a shared sacred well-being for people and the planet. Thank you, and may peace and blessings be with you all.
Thank you, Dr. Francis Kuria, for your intervention and your engagement in this issue. So now I give the floor to Iman Marwan Sarwad Gil, Commissioner of Organization American State for Relief and Freedom. Have the floor.
Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, Assalamualaikum, peace be upon you all. In the name of Allah, the gracious, the merciful. I think all of us who are sitting around this table, we understand the importance of today's topic. And what comes to my mind is the English proverb, "If you sit in a glass house, don't throw with stones." In order to protect our right to practice our religion, it's essential that we protect others' religious sites. But I was wondering and thinking in preparation of today's session, what arguments could be presented to those who do not agree with us and who violate the sanctity of religious sites? So first of all, I was thinking about especially the how much the religious sites are deeply rooted into our cultural, moral, and social heritage and our rich history as mankind. So there's no surprise that even according to UNESCO, twenty percent of all those buildings and sites which are declared as the global heritage, they have a deep connection with religious and spiritual places. But I would go even one step ahead and claim that religious sites are not just deeply rooted to our past, but also to our present and our future as mankind. Because when religious sites and temples are vandalized, demolished, the loss is not limited to the architectural or material, but goes much beyond. And in my case, as a person who was born and raised in Germany, especially the famous words of a Jewish German writer Heinrich Heine resonate a lot. When he, at the beginning of the Nazi persecution against Jews, he said the famous words that in societies, when they start burning the books of a certain group or minority, those societies end up burning their bodies. Unfortunately, his famous words turned to be true with the Holocaust. But I would say it's a universal warning for all of us. And we can say the same pattern, that those societies where religious sites, especially of minorities, are not protected, also the life itself is threatened by of those members. And due to the time, I will not go into the example of the several Christian, Muslim, Jewish, or other faith minorities, but just give my own example. I belong, and my parents, they belong to the Emdeh Muslim community. And because of the religious persecution, they had to migrate from Pakistan. And if we analyze, for example, this close interconnection between the threat to the life and the vandalization of mosques or religious sites, according to Nox Thames, an independent scholar and researcher and human activist, he, for example, stated that just in the year 2024, more than twenty mosques of the Emdeh community were vandalized, just in one province of Punjab. So the point which I want to highlight is that those societies who fail to protect the religious sites, gradually they will fail to protect as well the human dignity and the human sanctity of life. And I believe that the sanctity of religious sites is at the center of the Article eighteen of the Human Rights Declaration, which guarantees the freedom of religion for every human being. And it's a great source of inspiration for myself personally that my religion fourteen centuries ago revealed this truth. In my case, the Holy Quran in chapter twenty-two and verse forty-one clearly interconnected and established religious of freedom with the protection of religious sites. And a very interesting point which I want to highlight here, that before mentioning the order, the moral duty to Muslims to protect the mosque, the precise name of synagogues, churches, and temples have been mentioned. So many times, and contrary to the action and mischievous behavior of extremist and so-called Muslims who want to hijack the noble terminology of jihad, Islam teaches to the Muslims that it's their moral duty to protect all religious sites in their societies. And the Holy Prophet, the founder of Islam, Holy Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, even in times of wars, he precisely instructed to his followers to keep this in mind. And I'm convinced that it was his noble example and teachings and guidance that when his second caliph, Hazrat Umar, may Allah be pleased with him, when he was at Jerusalem and was invited by the Christians to offer the prayers in the holy Christian site, he refused that offer. And he said that he will not do so because out of the fear that the followers or the coming generations might convert the holy Christian site into a mosque. So now, in conclusion, just touching the example or the point, how can we establish this noble example as well in our societies and in our surroundings? I found a very beautiful Kazakh proverb or saying. I will not read it out in the Kazakh language in order to avoid the wrong pronunciation. But the translation is, "If the heart is generous, the house or no space will feel little or small." So I think if we achieve to purify our hearts and convert our hearts into sacred places, then not only God will descend there, but we'll become automatically guardians of all the religious places around the world. So may Allah, may God enable us all to be peacemakers and guardians of all religious sites and sacred places. Amen.
Thank you very much, Iman Marwan Sarwad Gil, Commissioner of Organization American State for Relief and Freedom, for your very inspiring words. And I will comment later on my concluding segment. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency, Mr. Rona Otto Ivan, Ambassador of Hungary to the Republic of Kazakhstan.
Thank you so much, Chairman, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Allow me to read out the speech of State Secretary of the Prime Minister's Office of Hungary in charge of Church and National Minority, Mr. Miklós Scholtes, who unfortunately got stuck at the airport and was unable to arrive today. But hopefully tomorrow, he will be with us already. Allow me to begin first of all by expressing my gratitude for the invitation and the opportunity to be here. This conference, which brings together representatives of different religions, symbolizes in itself that humanity has a shared... symbolizes in itself that humanity has a shared responsibility for peace, for the teaching of our churches and the preservation of our spiritual heritage. Today, the world is facing numerous challenges and uncertainties in political, social and moral terms alike. Currently, we are living in an age of danger. So it is of utmost importance to have points of reference to which we can return. For us Hungarians, these points of reference are the values that stem from our faith and our centuries-old cultural and religious traditions, which have not only shaped our identity, but are also sustaining us in present days and pointing the way for the future. The renewal and future development of Hungary cannot be imagined without value-based communities. In this work, religious communities with a thousand-year history are natural and valued allies of the government. This conviction is also reflected in the fact that our country's new fundamental law adopted in 2011 fully guarantees freedom of conscience and religion, both at the individual and community levels. At the same time, it recognizes the historical and nation-preserving role of Christianity and respects all religious traditions present in our country. The state not only recognizes religious communities, but also considers them as strategic partners. Currently, there are thirty-two churches with featured status and other smaller denominations operating in Hungary. This number is outstanding even by international standards and clearly reflects the Hungarian government's extremely supportive policy towards churches. Few countries in Europe can take pride in such extensive and positive relations with religious communities. Hungary's religious diversity is also remarkable. In addition to Christian denominations, which have the largest number of followers, Jewish, Buddhist, Muslim and Hindu communities can also practice their faith in peace and security. The role of churches is not only to transmit religious and moral values, but also to shape society on a daily basis. Churches play an active role in the performance of public tasks. The Hungarian government strives to provide them with all the necessary theoretical and material support as we believe that the presence and work of churches are of irreplaceable value in the life of society. Over the past fifteen years, the Christian Democratic Government has achieved rapid growth in the following areas. Since 2010, the number of children attending church-maintained educational institutions has more than doubled. More than a quarter of a million children attend such institutions in Hungary, which has a population of nine point five million. There are fifty church-maintained institutions in the healthcare sector. In fourteen years, more than three thousand eight hundred churches have been renovated, two hundred new churches have been built, and one thousand eight hundred community spaces have been reconstructed, and three hundred and forty new community spaces have been built. And the Hungarian population and in Hungary and in the Hungarian populated areas of the Calpatian Basin. Our churches have a remarkably strong presence in the social sector as well. The stable economic situation allows us to support not only the preservation of our built heritage, but also the support of religious education, the income of church personnel as well as community programs. Esteemed conference, the cooperation with churches has also brought about change at the societal level. The number of marriages conducted has increased by thirty-one percent over the past decade. The fertility rate has risen from one point twenty-five to one point four. The number of abortions has halved and divorce rates have fallen by twenty-six percent. These numbers also show that religious life, religious communities and decision-making based on Christian values strengthened our country not only spiritually, but in a social sense as well. Where churches are built and communities flourish, society is stronger and safer. Hungary is proud that our commitment to Christian values is tangibly shaping the future. However, we are rather saddened to see that churches and some parts of Europe are closing and being converted for secular purposes into nightclubs, hotels, sport halls, while in Hungary, sacred places are constantly being built and renovated. That is why events such as this Congress are so important, as they give us the opportunity to share our experiences, learn from each other, strengthen each other and jointly formulate values that can guide future generations. I would like to express my gratitude to the host country, Kazakhstan, the organizers and all those who contributed with their work to this exceptional event. I am confident that the conference will be an inspiring and empowering experience for all of us. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Her Excellency, Ambassador of Hungary to Republic of Kazakhstan. And I have to say that I've been very generous with the speaker till now, but now the clock is going very quick. So I will ask you to try to respect the three minutes. Try to respect three minutes, because you have been talking five minutes, even more. So thank you. So now I give the floor to Mrs. Deborah Boudreau, Chief International Affairs Office, Buddhist Sutti Foundation, Buddhist Sutti Charity Foundation.
Thank you, Excellency, Mr. Miguel Maratino, Excellency, Mr. Marlene Ashi Bayaf, Ms. Nihah Saad, Director of UNAOC, Honorable Jingbao and Honorable Li Guangfu, distinguished guests and friends. In Buddhism, sacred spaces are not only places for worship, but also heavens where compassion and wisdom are nurtured. Safeguarding them is protecting humanity's spiritual roots. At the Buddhist Sutti Foundation, our practices follow the teaching of Dhamma Master Zhenyan, gratitude, respect and love. These values guide us to serve with impartial compassion, offering aid according to need, not greed. In this way, we protect dignity across all faiths, honoring the truth that all beings share the same intrinsic nature. When religious sites are harmed, we respond with the Bhisafa spirit of Korana, compassion in action. Volunteers and clergy of many traditions come together to repair damage, offer psycho-social care and stand in solidarity. Dialogue is transformed into skillful means or apaya, developing early warning systems against hate speech, mindful safety walkthroughs and shared cultural gatherings that turn division into community. Our youth programs are rooted in sila, ethical conduct. And in Master Zhenyan's teachings say that the young are the hope of humanity. Through media literacy, the tools of AI information justification, compassion ethics and service learning at diverse house of worship, young people learn to discern truth from manipulation, protect sacred sites and cultivate harmony across differences. AI can become a mirror of mindful inquiry, filtering misinformation, amplifying voices of peace and ensuring accurate narratives of dignity and coexistence. Preparedness reflects right mindfulness, samasati. Mapping local religious sites, designating focal points and ensure rapid response when threats arise. This mindful vigilance extended to every day's practice. By promoting a plant-based diet rooted in compassion, we reduce harm to sentient beings and nurture a culture of respect for all life. In this way, safeguarding begin within cultivate inner compassion that blossoms outward into protection of sacred space and of the vulnerable. Interreligious dialogue affirms interbeing that all Dhamma doors open to the same universal truth. When we safeguarding another sacred space, we honor our shared humanity. Governments and multilateral partners also share the responsibility guided by the principle of right action. Funding site protection, in-acting safeguards and fostering resiliency. Faith community can embrace a mindful circle of mapping, protocols, liaison and interfaith solidarity in action. Friends, safeguarding religious sites is not only about security, it is about living with gratitude, respect and love. It is the Buddha path, it is the middle way. Neither fear nor neglect, but harmony and care. In this spirit, the Buddhist Sutti Foundation and its affiliate network stands ready to work hand in hand with the United Nations, member states and civil society to translate the UN Charter's promises into daily practice and to embody the pact for the future as a living reality. By cultivating compassion, applying wisdom and embracing the tour of both tradition and innovation, we affirm that safeguarding sacred space is safeguarding the very dignity and future of humanity. Security with dignity, protection with participation. Thank you and Amitovah.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Deborah Boudreau, Chief International Affairs Officer, Buddhist Sutti Foundation, Buddhist Sutti Charity Foundation. Thank you for your intervention. Now I give the floor to Reverend Dr. Joe Bailey West, Deputy Secretary General and Bishop for Speechless Power Ministry in the Anglican Communion. Sir, you have the floor.
Your Excellencies are generous hosts here in Kazakhstan, leaders at the UN, fostering pathways of peace and my colleagues in religious leadership around the world. I greet you in the name of Jesus Christ and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. The second woman in a row, how about that? I want to invite you to reflect on a very basic question. What makes a site sacred? What is it we might want to safeguard? The answer to this question shapes the way we then seek to set about the safeguarding. A sacred site speaks of a special place of encounter and transformation. In the Christian West, the notion is captured by one particular Latin anthem, locus iste adeo factus est, which translates to "This place was made by God." It has a very famous musical setting by Anton Bruckner, in case you're interested. And it stems from the biblical story of Jacob's ladder, where Jacob says, "Surely the Lord is in this place and I knew it not." And the story of the burning bush, where Moses is told to take the shoes from off your feet for the place where you stand is holy ground. Here at the heart of the Torah is the expectation of God's transforming work and then testimony of how God worked in human experience. And so, "This place was made by God" becomes, "This place is where God made me." Over the course of centuries, a sacred site becomes a focus of commemorating where God made a people. It's a site for pilgrimage and devotion precisely because it intensifies the ongoing formation of a people and their faith. I look forward to hearing thoughts on this from my colleagues around this table representing the variety of faiths, but I believe such a description holds true for the majority of us here. I've already quoted from the Hebrew Bible a text held sacred across at least three of the world's major religions. I want to suggest that in recognizing a sacred site, the particular religious tradition is secondary. We may be talking about the Temple Mount for Jews or the Golden Temple for Sikhs or the Dome of the Rock for Muslims. Precisely because the foundation of a sacred site is theological, "This place was made by God", it is not political or partisan to declare a site sacred. To which religion it may belong is a secondary matter if we can acknowledge first it is made by God. A sacred site is a special place of human divine encounter and thus a site of worship and transformation. As religious leaders in an increasingly secular and authoritarian world, I want to ask you therefore, can we not stand together for the sake of safeguarding all sacred sites? If a sacred site is about God, some people might ask, why does it need safeguarding? An attack on a sacred site may profoundly dishonor God, but that in no way diminishes the divine. No human is capable of that. I urge that the word blasphemy does not belong here. Rather, what is being attacked when a sacred site is destroyed is the people whose identity is shaped and centered on that place. Destroying the site is a symbolic way to destroy a people, to suggest they do not belong, that they have no contribution to make. Whereas the sacred site is the evidence for their historic presence, their legitimacy, their credibility. The issue is about religious freedom. And the real threat to religious freedom is the rise of authoritarian and totalitarian states where minorities are not tolerated but feared, where the notion of diversity somehow presents a threat to the identity of a nation. And so the solution has to be to work at coexistence, to come together in humility amidst our diversity and say, "This place was made by God, it is therefore not mine or yours to destroy." From my own tradition, I want to name two heartbreaking recent circumstances. The first is in Artsak in Nagoro Karabakh, currently under Azerbaijani occupation. Artsak has for centuries been home to an extraordinary Christian Armenian cultural heritage, churches, monasteries, crossstones, cemeteries, sacred monuments that date back more than fifteen hundred years. But since the 2023 attack, for the first time in centuries, there are no Armenians left there. His Grace, Bishop Vatanis Abrahamyan and his people are currently living in exile. Those Christian sacred sites are left completely unprotected and independent reports evidence a deliberate campaign for their destruction and desecration, including attempts to falsify their true history as if to erase the Armenian presence from Artsak's history and memory. The second place where sacred sites are threatened by a state acting to undermine religious diversity is in Israel. There is the example of Tybe, which is the ancient site of Ephraim, where Jesus retreated before entering Jerusalem. It is almost the last exclusively Christian It is almost the last exclusively Christian village in the country of Israel, but it has been progressively terrorized by settlers in recent months. Meanwhile, just as Rabbi Shlomo spoke of fearing to visit the Mount of Olives, so there are fears for both Christians and Muslims in Jerusalem right now. For Christians visiting the Church of the Holy Sepulchre where Jesus was crucified and for Muslims at the Al-Aqsa Mosque, especially around festivals when it is most precious for the faithful to gather. We have the Hague Convention and UNESCO Conventions for protecting cultural property in conflict zones. But I understand proper satellite monitoring mechanisms and oversight frameworks are sorely needed. Cataloging sacred sites seems necessary and good, but we need to beware the way that highlighting them could exacerbate their vulnerability and increase the danger of destruction. As religious leaders gathered here, I urge that we work together for a different kind of protection. By working to protect religious freedom, especially the minority groups in our lands. I want to take this point made by Imam Marwan, my neighbor, a step further. There is little that speaks louder than when we step out beyond the interests of our own religious group to defend another religious group. If Muslims present here would speak for the Armenian Christians expelled from Nagoro Karabakh and if the Jews here would speak up for Taibey and the Christians here for the safety and well-being of both Jews and Muslims in many Western nations right now, this special session would represent a significant step towards defending the vulnerable, challenging authoritarian governance and protecting sacred sites. In asserting surely this place is made by God, we are affirming that surely this world is made by God. By defending one another across our differences, not just defending our own, we are truly working together to safeguard every faith and every sacred site. Thank you.
Now I will, I will give the, the floor to His Vertuesque Islam al-Hassar of Passah Sadeh, his representative for some comment of the Reverend Adyen. But let me proceed because we don't want to create now some misunderstanding. Okay, so I give now the floor to Mr. Mufti Dammir Mukhadinov, Professor Doctor of Theology, First Deputy Chairman of a Rish of Board of Muslim Russian Federation, Executive Faketa of Muslim International Forum.
Firstly and foremost, I'd like to thank the organizers of the following AIDS Congress of Leaders of World Traditional Religions. And thank you so much for that kind invitation to address this important event. And I greet all those gathered here on behalf of the twenty-five million strong Muslim Ummah of the Russian Federation. And together with the Chairman of the Spiritual Administration of Muslims of the Russian Federation, Sheikh Ravil, we have attended almost all the Congresses of Leaders of World and Religions. In 2022, on the sidelines of this forum, we prayed together with the late Pope Francis for peace throughout the world. And the special session of today's meeting devoted to the protection of religious sites is especially relevant for Russian Muslims. We are making tremendous efforts in terms of safeguarding the historic Muslim religious sites and to revive the memory of lost shrines to which the scholarly literature published under our auspices is dedicated. And we see on how with the personal example, people provide huge efforts in terms of safeguarding the sites. From a historical and architectural point of view, particular interest lies within the complex of Muslim sites in the city of Kassimov, three hundred kilometers from Moscow, which once housed the residence of Hans and Sultan from the Chingizid Dynasty. Among them was the Kazakh Han of the seventeenth century, Uras Muhammad bin Ondan, whose tragic death became a prelude to the end of the time of troubles in Moscow with Russia. In Kassimov, there still stand the medieval Hans mosque and the ma'zalims of the Chingizid Han Shah Ali of the sixteenth century and the Hewan Sultan Afghan Muhammad of the seventeenth century. And today, after many decades during which these sites were requisitioned by the state, the spiritual administration of Muslims of the Russian Federation is doing everything possible to preserve them and to raise funds for the scholarly restoration. And among the most recent achievements was the installation at our expense in 2022 of a monument to Queen Su Yumbeke, a symbol of the Tatar people on the square in the front of Hans mosque, as well as the improvement of the central street in this area. The oldest mosque in the Russian capital is the Historic Mosque in the Tatars' Slaboda, right in the heart of Moscow. It recently marked the two-hundredth anniversary of its construction and by order of the President of Russia, Vladimir Putin, with the support of the Moscow City Government, the Ministry of Culture of Russia and the Republic of Tatarstan. This mosque is currently under restoration. We are looking forward to the completion of the works and the ceremonial reopening of the renovated House of Worship. And the spiritual administration of Muslims of the Russian Federation has organized the construction and restoration of mosques in Moscow, Tver, Yaroslav. And the crescents of these mosques peacefully neighbor the crosses of Christian churches. And this fact alone is a source of our pride. We are convinced that precisely this approach, careful preservation of historical memory and it is a prologue of peace throughout the world. So and Surah 22 of the Quran, Al-Hajj, states that, "If Allah did not allow some people to defend themselves against others, monasteries, churches, synagogues and mosques in which the name of Allah is much mentioned, would surely have been destroyed." It's precisely the violent seizure of sacred sites and repeated violations of fundamental human rights that lie at the root of major military and political conflicts drawing the world's attention. Religious leaders prayed for peace and called for balance and harmony in interfaith and interethnic conflicts. In conclusion, I'd like to provide my gratitude to the organizers, to the Republic of Kazakhstan. Thank you so much for provision of such a meeting. Thank you so much for the head of state, Khosum Jomartokhaev, who participated within the General Assembly, UN, in 2023. He was talking about the protection of Quran. Also, Madam Nihal Sadat for the huge efforts within the preservation of faith and peace. Thank you so much for your attention.
Mufti Dammir Mukhadinov, thank you for your intervention. And I still insist I try to keep the three minutes. So now I give the floor to Dr. Mohammed Raghiv Hussain Niemi, Chairman of the Council of Islamic Ideology of the Islamic Republic of Pakistan.
Bismillah. Thank you. Distinguished guests, delegates, respected religious leaders, excellencies and honored guests. I will recite here two verses of the Holy Quran. The first one is, "For you, your faith, and for me, my faith." And the second one is, "All Prophet peace be upon him, come to agree on those points which are common between you and us." It is both a privilege and a solemn responsibility to address this distinguished gathering today. As the Chairman of the Council of Islamic Ideology of Pakistan, I bring with me not only the sentiments of the peoples of Pakistan, but also the collective hearing of communities across the world who seek to worship in peace, dignity and security. In an era marked by unprecedented technological progress and global connectivity, it is deeply depressing that we continue to witness a rise in violence against places of worship. Vows, churches, synagogues, temples, sacred sites that should stand as centuries of peace and reflection are increasingly becoming targets of threat, violence and political provocation. The United Nations Secretary General's report rightly identifies this as a global crisis, whether it is a declaration of holy books, the bombing of mosques, the burning of churches or the demolition of temples. Such acts are not assaults on building but attack on the very identity and dignity of communities. They seek to repudge our social fabric and fan of the frames of division. As a religious leader and more importantly as a humble servant of faith that teaches compassion, tolerance and coexistence, I firmly believe no one should ever have to fear for their life simply because they wish to bow their head in prayer. Grave concern about Gaza, Myamir and other areas in the world. On the, on the other hand, we cannot overlook the painful reality unfolding in regions such as Gaza, Myamir. In Gaza, religious sites are not spread in the midst of the relentless bombardment. Most churches, synagogues and graveyard, symbols of people, history and faith lie in ruins. In Myamir, the Muslim Rohingya population has seen their mosques burned and their villages razed, often with impunity. These are not isolated incidents. They are a reflection of a deeper malice or growing intolerance that must be collectively addressed. At the same time, I also condemn hundreds of attacks on most shrines and worship places in Pakistan from nine eleven till now. We Pakistani face ninety thousand persons to be killed in these activities in the name of someone's own Islamic ideology. But it is the truth that Islamic ideology, it is totally against this ideology. The role of responsibilities of the governments, as recognized under Article eighteen of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the right to practice one's faith freely, including the protection of one's place of worship, is a non-negotiable human right. The UN Charter clearly interests member states with the primary responsibility to ensure the safety and protection of religious sites within their borders. The UN General Assembly Resolution fifty-five over two five four also obliges states to exert their utmost effort in this regard. In democracies where governments are elected by the people, this responsibility becomes even more profound. The social contract demands protection, not persecution. Even governments fail to protect religious sites, they not only violate international law, they betray the trust of their own people. Global solution, the United Nations Plan of Action, we condemn, we commend the United Nations efforts, including the Plan of Action to safeguard religious sites and the recent global conference in, in Casques. These initiatives provide framework for cooperation, policy development and mutual accountability. But frameworks alone are not enough. We must see real action. We must see real action, real enforcement and real change on the ground. Let us move from conferences to commitments and from commitments to concrete protection. In Pakistan, we recognize the diversity of our religious landscape, our constitution guarantees religious freedom and our government remains committed to the protection of all places of worship, mosques, churches, gurujwaras, mandhas alike. And for this, for the very first time, the definition of Muslim introduced in the Constitution of Pakistan, the person will be called a Muslim who has faith in the oneness of the Allah Almighty and he has faith in the last prophethoodness of the last prophet of the peace, of Muhammad peace be upon him. Religious leaders must lead. Finally, I appeal to my fellow religious leaders, Muslim, Christian, Jewish, Hindus, Buddhists and others. Let us not allow the forces of hatred to hijack our faith. Let us collaborate more closely, speak more courageously and stand more united in condemning intolerance, promoting coexistence and demanding that all governments rise to their sacred duty to protect what is sacred to their people. Let this special session not just mark another date in the calendar, but became a turning point in our shared commitment to humanity, dignity and the divine truth. As we approach the eightieth anniversary of the United Nations Charter, let's renew our vow to uphold this spirit, not only in theory, but in every community, every street and every sacred site around the world. May peace prevail upon all people of faith. May justice guide our actions and may we never forget when a sacred site falls, a part of our shared humanity falls with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please try to keep in three minutes. So now I give the floor to Mr. Samir Santila Somalia, President of Somalia Vidawar and Chancellor of Somalia Vidawar University.
Your Excellencies, thank you so much for inviting me on the behalf of Hinduism to speak here on the safeguarding of religious sites. Religious sites are both physical and spiritual. They are sanctuaries for the individual and the community. They are places of prayer. They are places of longing for the individual with the divine and for the community with their identity, for a freedom to worship publicly and privately, openly and also in one's own mind. I would like to quote Mahatma Gandhi, who was a great leader of the last century and in my opinion, a leader for all time. He mentioned that "An eye for an eye will only end making the whole world blind." The meeting here today and the Congress tomorrow brings us here to remind us to keep our eyes open and not be blinded by the hatred we see and the hatred we hear. Gandhi also famously said, "I will not let anyone walk through my mind with their dirty feet." I think it's important for us because we all know that in the social places we inhabit, we do at times try to have people walk through our minds with their dirty feet. Let this meeting also remind us to keep our doors closed and not let those dirty feet in. Gandhi also famously said, "Let us accord the same respect to the religious faith of others as we would accord one's own." There's a lovely saying in our scripture, "Nem manushat paro dharm." There is no religion greater than service to humanity. I would like to talk about a couple of personal examples. I have recently started learning music. My teacher is a, is a teacher, an ustad. He comes from the Muslim faith. And we recently had And we recently had a festival of Ganesha in India, in the Hindu tradition. And he asked me when he came home when he saw the decorations, I said, "This is a festival to Ganesha." So he asked me, will I, we allow, can I perform for him, which is a beautiful sense of bridging cultures? And he taught me the first bandish, which is a bandish to Allah, to rahim, to karim. And so I think it is not just enough to, it is also interesting for us to get in to the other culture, to belong, to, to respect it and also in many ways to love it, even though it may not be your own, you live in your, your own culture but you respect the other. As I also come from an education institution, taking learnings from today, I think it is important for us to take our own students to religious places, not only of the tradition they come from, but from others, so they learn to respect the thoughts and the architecture of the other traditions that there are. I would like to end with a saying from the Atharvveda. Let us not fear people or places we know, let us not fear the future we don't know, let us not fear what is, we know to come and what we do not know to come. Let all situations and directions be friends of us. We all live on one planet, we all share one world and one fate. Let us all work together to make it beautiful for all of us, it's our only home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Samir Santila Somalia, for your intervention, for reminding us the fantastic quotation of the grand leader Gandhi and your final comment about one humanity that are the ones we have to defend. Now, we will ask Dr. Ali Akbarziah, Head of Center for Interreligion, Intercultural Dialogue, to take the floor.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. I would like to thank the Excellency Martineus, the President and Chairman of this session and also the Excellency Mrs. Nehad and the other chairmans of this session. Before I'd like to say that Karabakh, it cannot be occupied by the Azerbaijan government. The Karabakh is the part of Azerbaijan and we cannot use this term about the Karabakh. I would like to say that in Iran, we have about three hundred churches from third century of Christianity and we have many religious sites from Jews like Esther Murdochay in Hamadan and other Judaic seminaries in Iran that is preserved and protected by the government. And also we have the Ministry of Cultural Heritage that protect these religious sites and every year they spend a lot of money to, for renovation and also preserve these religious sites. And in some places that some Christians, for example, they immigrate in other cities and the church is remained without any protection, some Muslims begin to protect that sites and begin to repair that churches, for example, the Muslim repairs the churches. We have many samples in Iran. Religious sites are not only sanctuaries for prayer, they are also places where believers come together for friendship, compassion and charitable work, helping orphans, the poor and vulnerable. Communities that still gather in sacred places to remember God often enjoy stronger social cohesion than those where extreme individualism shaped by certain modern ideologies had weakened communal ties. These sites also form an essential part of a nation's cultural and spiritual heritage, destroying them in tantamount to erasing the identity of a people. The finest expression of human creativity, painting, mirror work, ceramics and architecture are often found in religious buildings. Some of the greatest artists' treasures of nations such as Iran, Egypt, India and China can be seen in mosques, churches, synagogues, Hindu temples and Buddhist shrines. To ignore or destroy such treasures for political, military or sectarian reasons is not only an offense against one nation but an injury to all humanity and its spiritual achievements. In recent years, we have witnessed the destruction of churches by groups like ISIS as well as the demolition of Muslim and Christian holy sites in the occupied Palestinian territories, acts aimed at erasing the religious identity of entire peoples. A significant number of sacred sites are the resting plates, places of great Islamic leaders and scholars. Sadly, some of these have been wept out, sometimes under the pretext, the pretext of urban development, sometimes because of sectarian extremism and sometimes in the name of fighting innovation. Among them are the historic grave in Bagi. Traditionally, the construction of elegant Islamic structures over the graves of spiritual leaders was a way to honor their memory and to draw nearer to God. Today, as many Muslim societies recognize the danger of sectarianism and religious extremism and seek to embrace moderation and mutual respect among Islamic schools and other faces, they must also dedicate themselves to restoring and preserving their religious heritage. Doing so strengthens the unity of the Muslim community and enriches the intellectual and spiritual life of nations while reviving their religious identity. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ali Akbarziah, and I give the floor to Mr. Nader Elias Moghrabi. Consul of Patriarch, Holy City of Jerusalem and Old Palestine, Theophilus III.
Thank you, Your Excellency. Your Excellencies, Your Eminences, Your Graces, Reverend Fathers, respected delegates, ladies and gentlemen, friends and colleagues. When we think of sacred sites or religious heritage, worn stones, tall towers come to mind. We think of the mosaics and artifacts that tell a story of a faith and connect visitors to a legacy that precedes them. All of this is of course true. I'm here to talk about Jerusalem, a city that is exceptionally unique. We think of it as a place of many holy sites, scores in fact, that shapes geopolitics, interfaith relations and attract the fascination of the world. When we think of Jerusalem as a complex collection of holy sites, we divide them up in our minds into Christian, Jewish or Muslim. But I come today to challenge that, not in the spirit of relativism but in the spirit of a more ambitious vision. As his battitude, Patriarch of Jerusalem Theophilus III said years ago, "We must consider Jerusalem as a whole, as a holy site in and of itself." I stand before you as a child of Jerusalem. My family stories are intertwined with the sacred spaces of all who call the holy city home, the business of pilgrims en route to the holy sepulcher or the kotel, the Western Wall, with the mosques called to prayer in the background. Even my name is a testament to these stories. It is Nader Elias and Elias as well known is a revered prophet in Judaism, Christianity and Islam. We are a Muslim family and proudly serving churches in Jerusalem since the early sixties. As a Muslim in the nineties, my late father, God rest his soul, for a decade purchased the yeast, the chameits, from Israel in the Passover period through the chief rabbi's office to help fulfill the commandments for the Jewish faith and its worshippers. Monasteries and mosques have shaped the person that I am today and instilled in me a desire to see these holy places preserved but also thriving. Jerusalem is a multi-religious mosaic but it is fragile and at risk of being broken. In the plenary session, Patriarch Theophilus will speak tomorrow about the importance of dialogue and synergy for the Holy Land. He will cast a hopeful vision whereby the Holy Land and the holy cities lives up to its calling as a mosaic of people and faiths where all have something to learn from another. It is a place of human flourishing and not a zero-sum game. This of course is what we continue to work for but the challenges are ever-present. When we understand Jerusalem in its entirety as a holy site, then the threats against this fragile mosaic become all the more serious. There are various actors who see the land as a zero-sum game. But if we're asked to point the top of the list, the answer will always be radicalism, especially in time of tension. Radicals always attempt to erode the presence of one faith over the other, both in space and in spirit, they refuse to partake in a vision of shared space. We can offer a small key, clergy are the key. Through their work of preservation and practice, they conduct services and challenge lightbulb and change light bulbs. They are facility managers, community representatives and leaders in their own right. More so, they are the ones who welcome all regardless of their faith to the festivals being celebrated and the services conducted. They connect the heritage and power of sacred spaces to all who enter the doors. If international bodies want to truly create meaningful action, they must engage with our religious leaders on the ground for the protection, preservation and promotion of religious and cultural heritage. This is the key to action. The message is clear, partnership with people, not just spaces. Do not forget the importance of people in the protection of sacred sites. The sites embody tradition, culture and identity to the indigenous community who worship there. We cannot afford to overlook their devotion. We cannot forget that the living people are the mortar that holds these sacred stones together. We must learn their stories and what the sacred sites mean to them, enable clergy to be the bridge between safeguarding strategies discussed here and the needs of the local community. This week, listen to the voices of these in attendance, not as remarks but as testimony to their ministries. Number two, resist the zero-sum game. Supporting a small community like Christians in Jerusalem is not at the expense of others. We must work with actors promoting free access to holy sites and freedom of worship to all. Rooting out radicalism must be at the forefront, empower those who recognize and respect the sanctity of other traditions and spaces. I'm a child of Jerusalem, it is, it was this mosaic that has led me on a path here before you today. Holy sites can be places of social cohesion when the end result is the flourishing of all, not a zero-sum game. To make that a reality, we must collaborate together at all levels, from the conference rooms in New York to parish churches in Bethlehem. This is the vision of Jerusalem present in my childhood, it is the vision we must continue to work towards together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nader Elias Moghrabi. Be sure that we all feel city of Jerusalem, citizen of Jerusalem, we are with you. Thank you very much. So I give the floor to Elder Matthew Holland, Executive Director of the Communication Department, the Chair for Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. You have the floor.
Thank you. Distinguished host, fellow global faith leaders and honorable United Nations organizers, it's a profound honor to be with you today at this gathering of great hearts and minds dedicated to the flourishing of faith, peace and compassion around the world. For many of us, this means that we act as the reminders and guardians of the divine in our world. Such a duty stems from and helps unite the diverse traditions and beliefs represented at this gathering. Today's special session on safeguarding religious sites addresses a core element of this duty, which is to ensure that we protect and maintain those physical structures and symbols that hold the beating heart of our faith communities and direct us all to things higher, holier and redemptive. In a world marked by rapid change, uncertainty, loneliness, division and loss of faith, the importance of protecting our sacred spaces has never been greater. Sadly, in diverse locations today, many sacred spaces face grave threats. Physical destruction, whether it be from neglect, vandalism or conflict, endangers these sites. This not only risks the loss of the great cultural and aesthetic value of the bricks and mortar in jeopardy but also the greater spiritual and emotional value of these places made holy by their history and mission. Here I channel Bishop Wells to reference the story of Moses at the burning bush. As early as that ancient biblical story, God has been teaching us that there are places and spaces on this earth that should be treated with special reverence and care. This is true not because they have simply been built or simply exist but because of what happens in and around them. Before Moses and the burning bush, that plot of land was just a dusty, unremarkable bit of mountain landscape. But as soon as Moses encountered and embraced the divine, it became holy, sacred and worthy of respect. The places we seek to preserve today are like Moses's Mount Horeb, places that humanity, that point humanity toward heaven and ground us in truth. They are sanctuaries where individuals and communities find peace, renewal and purpose. They serve as beacons of light amid darkness. They are in fact places where the divine presence is encountered and embraced and as the divine connects us to the Creator, it connects us to His other creations, namely each other. It does so with thoughts, feelings and ideas that transcend language, culture and circumstance. Within the beautiful walls of these holy places, one can see, hear and feel that universal truth that we are all children of God, loved and valued with equal human dignity, a truth that breaks down other ugly walls of doubt and division. Thus, these places are holy indeed. As guardians of the divine and the custodians of these holy sites worldwide, including churches, mosques, temples, monasteries, statues and shrines of many varieties, it's fitting even necessary that we gather today to assert that their safeguarding is crucial and work toward that end. Among other things, that means that we call upon governments, journalists and tourists and others to respect the sacredness and the access rules that a particular religion may impose upon its own sacred site and the ceremonial activity that goes with it. The work we do here today is be, and beyond, is a sacred duty we owe to God and each other. Individuals and nations need these sites more than they know. For in these sacred spaces rest moral and heavenly treasures that can best help heal, prosper and redeem the world and the whole human family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elder Matthew Holland, Executive Director of Communication Department, the Chair for Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Then I give the call to Benadol Li Guanfu, President of the Chinese Taoist Association.
Distinguished Mr. Martineus, distinguished delegates, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon. First and foremost, on behalf of the world Taoists First and foremost, on behalf of the World Taoism Council and Chinese Taoism Association, I’d like to provide my sincere gratitude for organizers of the following Congress, gratitude to Alliance of Civilizations, to Secretariat of the World and Traditional Leaders for their huge contribution within the interfaith and interreligious harmony. I’d like to provide my sincere support for your wisdom, for such significance. The following Congress really important because we have the anniversary of the UN, and we provide such vital topics as the reservation of the safeguarding of the original sites. Chinese part Taoism Association pays a huge attention to that and provides a huge provision. China is considered as the country of a huge number of religions, and government of China always protects the interests of all religious organizations by providing all appropriate legislation in terms of support, in terms of preservation and safeguarding of religious sites. We think that religious sites are not just spiritual places for believers, but also an important place, an important provider in terms of significant culture. This is the place of power, and this is the place of social harmony. And any acts of violence, distractions, abuse towards sites have to be considered as the violence of the whole humanity, and we fully condemn it, and we are being totally against such actions. In China, we have a clear legislative basis for reservation of sites and the special legislative rules, programs that leads to comprehensive protection, preservation, provision of security of religious sites. Religious organizations also take an active participation in terms of that by sticking to all the appropriate legislation. Government of China also provides all regulatory bases attracting religious organizations to work together, to preserve religious culture, to provide various types of funds. And within the example of Taoism, we actively provide a concept of ecological, and we also pay a huge attention not only to material protection of such places, but also a cultural functions and social values. A huge number of Taoism churches are considered not also as sites or religious centers, but also considered as the sources of the whole Chinese culture and tourist attractions. We strengthen the link of sites between people by providing funds, exhibitions, in order to raise the level of knowledge between people and stimulate the participation within the following process of reservation of religious sites. We firmly believe and support all that key measures and procedures of the UN in terms of preservation of cultural religions, religious sites. As for provision of security of such places, we also invite international organizations to jointly fight against the violations and abuse towards sites. Taoism Association is ready to provide and share its experience within the integration with international organizations by actively providing four global initiatives that were mentioned and provided by the state of China. In conclusion, I’d like to say that preservation of sites is not only responsibility of government but of the whole population, of the whole world. Religious leaders have to be a crucial actors within the following procedure by staying against the extremism, by fighting against the violations, and Taoism Association will be strengthening its ties with international structures jointly preserving the whole world. Thank you so much for your attention.
Now I give the floor to Dr. Enrico Malinaro. Try to be as brief as you can, no more than three minutes, four minutes.
I’ll ask the help of all these enlightened religious leaders because I have to do this miracle, and I thank Ambassador Martinez to give me the floor concluding, like in Cascais Global Forum, this session. So the miracle is to give you something practical, concrete, as a proposal, in three minutes. It’s really a mission impossible. I need all your prayers, but I have some tricks because Ambassador Martinez is going to send you this document. These are the recommendations from the Chair on Safeguarding Religious Sites. This is the list of legal obligations on the holy sites as a result of a legal study of fifteen seminars behind closed doors, not only interfaith seminars but even with Palestinians and Israelis, so people in conflict. And the second trick I have is that you will receive a copy of my paper where I explain from the legal point of view and international law why there are some basic principles obliging the parties. So, why me? Because I’m Italian, but Italy has something similar to Kazakhstan, because, you know, there were no terror attacks based on fundamentalist religions, from radical religions. I think it’s not by chance. I think Kazakhstan is doing incredible job, even this conference today in such a difficult political moment. We in Italy, we have the example of Saint Francis of Assisi in the dialogue with the Muslim community, and we have the example of the former mayor Florence Giorgio Lapira, who made the Mediterranean colloquial with Jewish, Muslim, and Christian leaders in order to find behind closed doors some practical solutions. I believe one possible practical proposal could be from Ambassador Martinez, the idea of a high-level committee of which the UNO could be the secretary, because what is implicit or explicit today is that the connection of the holy place of any religious site is collective identity. This is a socio-anthropological concept that I will elaborate in two days in round table on the team, but it’s essential education, as many of you said, on the concept of identity, mutual respect. So identity is not a weapon, a political weapon to manipulate and to attack people, but can be the basis of a new dialogue. Thank you.
Make a miracles, and thank you, Enrico, for your contribution and support. I will distribute at the end in the concluding remark these principles, but before we enter to the final session of this meeting, let give the floor to the representative of His Vortu Sheikh Al Am Islam Pasha Zada. They want to make some clarification about one intervention had been made in this meeting.
Thank you, Your Excellency. Distinguished participants, I am the Vice Chairman of the Kazas Muslims Board, Deputy of the His Vortu Sheikh Al Islam Allah Shukur Pasha Zada, and we must to ask this floor because one of the speakers did try to give you untrue information about the current situation in my country. As you know, the subject of our this session is safeguarding of the religious sites. This is a duty of the all religious figures and the policymakers, but most important duty of the religious figures, I mean, this is the safeguard of the peace processes. These processes which were, which is now, we are watching, and we are very shocked and very surprised when the Reverend Dr. Belli Wells, she tried to put the fire to the former conflict between Armenia and Azerbaijan. We know that there is information based on the liar propaganda by the Armenian church, and therefore I remind that the conflict between Armenia and Azerbaijan began in 1988 with the withdrawal of the 250,000 Azerbaijanis from their own territories. All our cemeteries, all our religious sites, all our mosques in the territory of Armenia were destroyed totally. Then in 1993, Armenia occupied twenty percent of the territories of Azerbaijan. Now, after the peace process which began, and you saw once months ago, the Armenian Prime Minister and the President of Azerbaijan signed the joint declaration with the participation of Mr. President Trump about the peace. These speeches destroyed all the peace process. In our Karabakh territory, we had sixty-seven mosques, sixty-five of them destroyed totally by Armenians. Only two they kept. Why? I can say you, because, as you know, minarets of the mosques were tall, and they used it for the fighting, as a fighting point for the snipers. They kept the animals in our mosques. They kept the pigs in our mosque, which is haram for Islam, for all Islamic world. Therefore, I am asking you, dear Miss Wells, be very careful and don’t involve and disturb the peace process, because now the people and believers, religious people, everybody wants the peace between two countries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Excellency.
Thank you, yes. I was to say to add only, this conference is a conference to build the future, and I have to tell the Reverend to support what her friend from Azerbaijan have say, because, you know, my dear colleague, you know, Azerbaijan, Karabakh now, is working with the UN, with Alliance of Civilizations, in order to protect religious sites with support and engagement also of the Armenian government. So we are looking to the future, and we are engaged to protect not all kind of Armenian religious site, but all kind of religions in Azerbaijan that include Karabakh. So with that, I give the floor to my colleague, you know, Mr. Akhan, Vice Minister of Kazakhstan, to make the first comment, and then I will make my say. Thank you.
Thank you, Excellency. Mr. High Representative for the United Nations Alliance of Civilizations, the Excellency’s Eminence, distinguished participants, I believe that despite the final, some not very pleasant point, but I think we remained very committed to the subject of today’s discussion, and we are very pleased to gather such an authoritative gathering and audience here. And as we heard today, over the past decades, the international community has witnessed a disturbing rise in violence targeting places of worship. Attacks on mosques, churches, synagogues, temples, and other sacred sites, whether in the Middle East, Asia, Africa, Europe, and the Americas, are not only assaults on physical structures, but on the very soul of communities. As highlighted in the UN Secretary General Assembly’s resolutions, this act seeks to sow fear inside cycles of violence and race collective identities. Today’s special session, along with the valuable thoughts and ideas of the distinguished participants filled with faith in dialogue, respect, and shared aspiration for peace, resonates deeply with our collective duty to preserve sacred spaces as symbol of identity, heritage, and humanity, shared spiritual legacy. Our discussions have highlighted the urgent need for cooperative efforts, respect for religious diversity, and the implementation of robust measures to ensure these sites remain sanctuaries of peace and reverence for present and future generations. As we conclude this special session on safeguarding religious site, we reaffirm our collective commitment to protecting these sacred spaces that hold deep spiritual, cultural, and historical significance. I would like to express sincere appreciation for the active participation and thoughtful contribution of all participants. Your engagement, dedication, willingness to share insights have enriched our dialogue and strengthened our resolve to work collaboratively. Let us carry forward the insights gained here today with a shared sense of responsibility to uphold dignity, harmony, and mutual respect across faith. Thank you all for your valuable contributions and dedications to this vital cause. Dear colleagues, we look forward to welcoming you tomorrow at the official opening of the eighth Congress of Leaders of World and Traditional Religions. I thank you very much.
Thank you, dear Akhan. Let me say a few words, very short, because we are ten minutes late of our schedule. My first words are of recognition and gratitude to all of you. I think we have had a very, very intense and very productive session. I think we all agree, and our intervention agree, that the protection of religious sites should be a collective responsibility. There will be no tolerance about violation, attack, undermining any religious site. Number two, I think that there has been, of course, extremely concern of all of us of the, you know, the situation of religious site in times of wars and conflict, and we all have, you know, in our mind today’s situation in the Middle East, particularly in Gaza and other places, and I really appreciate the presence of the Israeli rabbis, both of them, that came us and said a very, very clear word, they are also against any violation, attack, or of destruction of religious site. I encourage both of you, you know, I’m friend of you, I really, I remember Rabbi Obadiy Joseph, I met him several times in my time of EU Special Envoy. I have a great admiration, and we worked together. He was a man of peace, a man of reconciliation. I want you to talk to your people in Israel and try to understand what we have all I want you to talk to your people in Israel and try to understand what we have all agree, because he's needed, he's absolutely needed, that we preserve religious site in this conflict. But we have to take some specific measure, because we all agree, but unfortunately, when war is there, there is, you know, destruction, and there is casualties. So we should think about how to really, in term of conflict, to make a specific protection to religious site. Thirdly, in the presentation, Dr. Nihal Sadeh, you remember, you saw this mapping in Sweden, and you saw that is practically with small lights where the religious sites. Can you imagine if the UN, myself, my office, could present to the whole international community a map of the world with all these lights? What will mean? Being Christian, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, that spirituality means a lot in today's world. How many site you think there are in the world? Religious site? Five million? Ten millions? We all know, but you can imagine, you see the world illuminated, like Sweden is illuminated. So I encourage member states and countries to help us to monitor and to mapping religious sites. It's not just to identify where there are more, whether it's Christians, no, it's just to really show this political message, this spiritual message of importance and spirituality. Finally, I just distribute this recommendation. I don't want to enter in a drafting, but look at them. There has been other exercise, Dr. Kuria, Francis Kuria, having the release of some guidelines. We have to be inspired, but in the future follow-up, I think we have to be pragmatic, and we have to be, you know, specific and practical. So I really thank the Kazakhstan government to allow us to really have this session. I think it has been very, very fruitful, all of us. It's only the beginning, but we have to be in this commitment to make things better. And you will be invited again. Now we will have a Global Forum Alliance in Riyadh at the end of December, 15, 15 of December, and we hope that we will have a follow-up presenting the conclusion of today. So if you have some comment or recommendation, please send us, and if you have new ideas, please share with us. So thank you again, and thank you for having this opportunity to share constructive views about how to protect religious site today and tomorrow. Thank you very much.